Check.
You're good.
Okay. All right, I'll call, uh, like to call to order. The Ventnor City Commission Meeting, December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um. We would all rise for the flag salute, please.
Stand up. Hand.
Of allegiance. For while.
Mr. Sproul. Thank you. Before a roll call, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize the, um, the passing of a father of a former mayor. Um, Mayor, a friend of ours, all of ours, Beth McInerney, her father, Paul, passed away recently. Um, if you knew Paul, he was, uh, one of the most charismatic men I've ever met. He had these piercing blue eyes. He was a Ventnor resident for over fifty years. He served in these seats for eight years as a city commissioner. Uh, he owned, um, a hair salon that was very well successful, very well attended at on Ventnor Avenue, Todd DePaul's Hair Salon, um, served the country in the eighty-second Airborne. Uh, so if we can just ask, uh, for a moment of silence on his behalf. Thank you. Commissioner Langraft, did you want to add anything on behalf of, uh?
Just that, you know, our heart goes out to Beth and whole McInerney family, our sisters, the grandkids and everybody. You know, Paul, as you said, Mayor, was just a, uh, beyond life, just a big part of the Ventnor family. Uh, many knew him, many learned how to play hockey. I'm out here in Utah with a guy that that learned to play hockey with, with Paul at the ice rink here in Ventnor. Um, just such a great guy and would do anything for you. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to miss his, his services this week, but I'm out of town. But, uh, you know, really heartfelt sympathies go out to the McInerney family. They're just such a good group of people and, and served our community well with Beth and Paul both. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. That.
Yeah, Paul was, um, a sweetheart and, um, when Beth was mayor, uh, I was administrator and I would sit in her office at her desk behind the computer. Room here was scarce, so I used her office. And he would walk in fully expecting to see Beth and he couldn't see who was behind the computer. All big smiles and, um, then he would say it was me. And even though he kept smiling, I could just see the disappointment on his face, you know? But I didn't let on, but he was so proud of her and he was so happy that she was the mayor and she was basically following in his footsteps as a commissioner also. So I'll always remember how he would walk in and so excited and then be, you know, he'd try not to show it, but I could see it. He was disappointed. It wasn't her in the seat and I didn't take it personal.
Thank, thank you. Um, so, um, we'll move on to the, um, to the agenda, uh, roll call, Lisa, please.
Commissioner Langraft?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here.
Um, Lisa, would you read the, uh, open public meetings notice, please?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would you read the, um, live streaming announcement, please?
The city of Ventnor offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access. Public who participates remotely will be muted during the commission meeting, except during the public comment portions of the meeting. Any person attend attempting to disrupt this meeting may be denied access at the discretion of the city. In the event remote access is unavailable due to technology malfunction or other reason beh- beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. City commission meetings are held in person and the public is welcome to attend. The best way to ensure an individual's ability to publicly comment is to attend in person so that the comments may be made in the event of a technology malfunction. The city reserves the right to discontinue offering public comment via remote access at the discretion for any future meetings.
Thank you. Um, just to, um, just briefly, before we get into the agenda, for those who haven't been to meetings before, this is a combination of two meetings. It's a workshop meeting where we, um, identify the things that we're going to vote on on the second half of the meeting. So at the first half of the meeting during the workshop, it's the, the intention is for those of us, uh, commissioners that have uh, different departments, we can, um, we can ask questions of each other and add, uh, add more information to the things that are, uh, the, the, the work of the day, if you will, uh, and then, and then there's a comment period at the end of the workshop meeting for anything that is under the workshop that has been addressed in the workshop. And then we go through the entire meeting again fairly quickly and vote on those things. And at the end of that, there's an open public moment for anybody that has anything to say about anything, anywhere, anyhow, and as long as it pertains to Ventnor, I think is a good, a good guideline. Um, so, uh, moving on, um, uh, we have is the department head reports and there are no department head reports this evening, but we hope to continue that in, uh, in the new year. Um, we have no, uh, the next is capital discussion and we do not have capital discussion this evening. Um, and then we will vote on minutes. We have two groups of minutes depending, uh, depending on who was here that can vote on those for, uh, November, uh, November fourteenth and October tenth. Um, we have, then is ordinance introductions. Um, this evening, we do not have any new ordinance introductions. Correct?
Correct.
Um, we have ordinance, public hearings, so because we have no adoptions or, uh, or public hearings, uh, we won't be having any of those. And then we have, um, uh, resolutions, um, resolutions by, uh, by consent. So there's a, a number of resolutions, um, by consent that will vote on, uh, resolutions twenty twenty-four dash three two zero through twenty twenty-four dash three five one, first of which, um, sets the, uh, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. So this is a record keeping, bookkeeping to set up our dates. Uh, we'll have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, but the rest are, uh, typically first and, and, and middle Thursdays of the month. Is there any?
So June, July and August, we have one meeting set.
Okay.
Um, and then if the need comes, we can always do a special, you know, just advertise and do a special meeting. But right now on the record, we just have one in June, one in July, one in August, and then of course, one in November and one in December.
Gotcha. Thank you. And if anything comes up, as sometimes they do, things do, we'll add a meeting if necessary. Uh, resolution three twenty-one authorizes parking enforcement for January, February, March within the city. So these are more an adoption for, um, special events. If there's an event that, um, that creates, uh, parking enforcement need, um, throughout the city, um, this allows that. Right now, we, it doesn't affect our no parking, uh, fee right now. There is still free parking uh, until, uh, March thirty-first. This is simply an enforcement issue. Um, then we have resolutions three twenty-two through three twenty-six, our tax abatements. Um, this is our tax abatement program for, uh, one eleven South Sw- Swarthmore, uh, fifty-one fifteen B Atlantic Avenue, seventy-one fourteen Vender Avenue, sixty-eight oh nine Winchester Avenue and five thousand Wellington Avenue. These are various residents that, uh, um, that apply for and qualify for, uh, tax abatements. Okay. Uh, next, we have, uh, resolutions three twenty-seven and three twenty-eight. This is, um, authorizing, uh, two new, uh, uh, police officers filling vacancies. These are not new positions. Um, this is Hayden Lady and Timothy Kennely for the city of Vender. They'll be sworn in, uh, tomorrow morning and begin training. Any questions there?
Well.
Um, um, next is resolution three twenty-nine. This is a chapter one fifty-nine, which means we're getting some revenue. Um, it's one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents towards alcohol education and rehabilitation. Um, then we have, uh, resolution three thirty and three thirty-one are also tax abatements for, uh, nine eleven North Cornwall and three South Portland. They are a variety that came in as the agenda got prepared because there were, um, they had different, different times of the year and we had a pretty big gap in between meetings. Um, so these are again, just a matter of record keeping for those abatements. Um, resolution three thirty-two, um, authorizes a, uh, my, I apologize for mispronouncing the name, McAlina Oz.
McAlina.
McAlina.
Mike, you had it. You're close.
Thank, Oz talks, Oz talks for Public Works Department. Why don't you share? That's, uh, share that Lance, that's your department and please apologize for my mispronunciation. Got it.
Stasis. Yeah, we, we went through with Rick and Tom, we went through a pretty exhaustive, um, interview process. I think we interviewed, uh, the ones I was involved with were six or seven of them. I think there was about seven or eight others that, uh, Rick and Tom went through, um, and, you know, brought McLean in. She's a Stockton grad. Um, sharp young lady, uh, lives in Ventnor, which is nice.
Oh, great.
So we like to see that. Um, so she'll be coming on board. I think January sixth will be her first day.
Great. And this is filling a vacancy, I think later on down.
We had a, we had a retire, retirement in public works in our admin department. Um, Mary gave us a bunch of years and, and, you know, we honored her at our, I think our last meeting in November or something, October, maybe. Um, yeah, so it's filling a vacancy over there. So looking forward to her start.
Great. Thank you. Um, the, um, next resolution is accepting resignation of Tina Prickett from, uh, uh, from Recreation Department.
If I, if I may very quickly just interrupt you.
Yes.
That is also authorizing the settlement, uh, to pay her for her unused vacation time.
Understood.
That was all vacation.
Believe it was all vacation time, yes.
So in case you didn't hear, it's also, we're also later on authorizing her, uh, unused vacation time. Um, resolution three thirty-four is a change order for, uh, the final change order for Ventnor Avenue, Little Rock, Safe Streets to Transit. This is a decrease. Um, Commissioner Langraft, do you, you want to, you want to put some? Any lo- local color on that?
Uh, let's see, this one is final Ventnor Avenue, Little Rock. So yeah, this is, um, making some change orders to a lot of the drainage and actually potable water. We had to replace some water services, um, to those, those intersections there. Um, make sure we got access to, um, water to the, some of the homes on the side streets. We had to do some drainage around there. This is the, the one light, the traffic signal, pedestrian signal at Little Rock there. It's not the rest of them. So this is just the one in the middle. That one's finished out, came out dynamite. It, it's very, um, helpful. We have two residents in that area that are legally blind, um, that use that very often. They go to Wawa, they go to, up to the boardwalk. Um, they're very happy that this intersection is now much safer for them to cross.
So how is that intersection different? Is there a, is there a, that, that some of them have?
It's not a traffic signal. It's just a pedestrian crossing signal.
I see. Right. Right. Got it. So, um, and then the, um, the, the change order is actually a savings of twenty-five thousand, uh, five hundred and forty-three, which is also a, a positive for the city.
Yep.
So it's, um, it's nice to see that. Um, resolution three thirty-four, moving on, is another, uh, refund for ta- is another, is a, a refund for tax overpayment for seventy-one fourteen Ventnor Avenue in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighty-five cents, six hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. Um, resolution three thirty-five, uh, is another refund for tax overpayment for seven South Buffalo in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Um, resolution three thirty-six is, um, a, uh, I'm sorry, they're a little out of order here. This is, uh, yeah, three thirty-seven, I'm sorry. Three thirty-seven is authorizing a shared service agreement with Margate for construction code officials. So this is, uh, um, shared service inter-local service agreement between the city of Margate. Any other thing to offer there or is, is that excel explanatory?
Well, just to know that Dino is going to help those guys out until they can find a full-time person there. Um, they had Jimmy Galantino retire. So they needed somebody in there. He's been doing it for a little while, um, kind of month to month. Now they've asked him to make it a little more permanent. So this, this is going to last a little while. At least, Tom, do you know if it's a full year?
We approved the, uh, shared service agreement for the year, but it could terminate, as you said, when they find somebody else.
Yeah. And Dino is willing to do it. Um, they're, they're covering the cost of that additional time. Um, and covering any, anything else that he needs to cover for, for them and he's able to do it. Um, he's got good staff underneath him now, so it's, it's working out pretty well.
Great.
What are the hours? Is this during Ventnor time or is it outside?
He's doing this on his own time.
Yep.
So aft- after hours at night, uh, during his lunch break, but yes, it's on his own time.
Hmm. Mostly reviewing plans. It's not really doing the, some inspection, but it's mostly reviewing plans. And sign off, sign offs on, on the subcode. Official.
Okay. Great. I'm glad we have a good working relationship from Margate. There's always things that, you know, that can lead to, to more positive. Um, as we, uh, you know, we're, we, we share a border, right?
Yep.
Um, so, um, moving on, unless you have any more questions?
Yeah.
Item, uh, resolution three thirty-eight is, uh, chapter one fifty-nine. This is, uh, body armor replacement uh, for the police department in the amount of three thousand and fifty dollars and sixty-three cents. So we're giving some revenue there for that important asset. Um, a lot on public works, Commissioner. Um, resolution three thirty-nine, you're the, you're the star today, is a word of Somerset Avenue sanitary sewer replacement to Fred M. Chavone, Chivone for eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, eight hundred thousand, thirty, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, Somerset Avenue Sanitary Sewer.
Yeah, new sewer line out there. Um, we'd, it was money we had to use or we were going to lose it through some funding. Um, also the sewer line out there is in pretty bad shape. So we're going to get that done. And this was the best time to get it done. Prices came in pretty good for the, for the numbers here. So we're supporting getting that done.
Great. Great. Um, the, uh, uh, the next resolution, three four zero is the one we mentioned, Mary Garfunkel, um, uh, is issuing payment for unused, um, unused earned time. Um, and, uh, three forty-one authorize a settlement agreement to Tina Prickett, both in, uh,
Right. So I stand corrected now because I said earlier that that first one was also doing this. I didn't realize there were two separate resolutions. So one was accepting the resignation. This one approves the settlement.
I knew, but I let you slide.
Okay. We appreciate that. Merry, Merry Christmas to you too.
Um, item three forty-one is, uh, cancellation of tax for.
No, three forty-two.
I'm sorry. Three forty-two.
Yep.
Three forty-two is canceling of tax for one oh six North Avalon Avenue. Um, one forty-two. One forty-three is extending employment agreements and establishing salaries for the twenty, twenty-five years. This is kind of far reaching across the non, um, uh, across the, uh, the, the contracted employees, correct?
Yeah, the, this is the individual employees who have, uh, service contracts and are not members of the collective bargaining groups. So it's not the teamsters, it's not the police, it's not the fire, it's everybody else.
Right.
And most of the department heads have individual contracts that lay out their terms and conditions of employment. Most of those are expiring at the end of this year. This resolution would extend them, uh, basically through the end of your terms.
Right. I, and this was circulated. I appreciate that. And any questions there?
Nope.
Uh, resolution.
Sure. I do have one question because in, in the resolution or the, on the agenda, it says for the year twenty twenty-five. The time you said, and I, I seem to recall it pushes these through all the rest of our term.
Twenty, so, yes.
So the contracts would be extended, but the salaries are only for twenty twenty-five.
Thanks. Thanks, Lisa.
Got it. Thank you. Um, thanks for clearing that up. Uh, item, uh, resolution three forty-four is another tax abatement. This one is for sixty-eight oh seven Winchester Avenue. Um, uh, this is, uh, something I believe Commissioner Langraft had, uh, had championed. Uh, resolution three forty-five, uh, is opposing Atlantic City Electric Company's rate increase request. Um, do you want to, you want to, you want to add anything to that, Commissioner?
Well, thanks, thanks, Mayor. So Atlantic City Electric, look, we all know things increasing costs, but you know, they came, our rates increased. Everybody saw that through this summer, through the last two years, their rates have been increasing. Now they're going back to BPU for an eight percent increase. You know, to improve their infrastructure. They should be investing money that they have already made from all of our, our residents throughout Atlanta County, uh, Cape May County, Part of Ocean, their whole region that they serve. They should be investing some of their money into these improvements and not putting that on the back of us taxpayers. Um, something that, you know, I know Congressman Andrew has been pushing back against. There was an article out there again today that the BPU is now reviewing it. So this is something that lets them know that, hey, guys, we're watching. You know?
Right.
That, and I appreciate the support on this to, to get it out there and, um, you know, encourage our neighboring communities to do the same. I think we're the first one to put this on an agenda.
Right. Yeah, thank you. I, I do, I do appreciate it. We're all residents here and we've all felt the pinch and, um, and, and that, that's a, it can be a big number for, for everybody.
Fixed income, so they're going to be really struggling to, to turn their electric on.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I can appreciate that. Um, so we'll be signing and voting on that and, uh, and sending that along with our support. Um, resolution three forty-five, uh, is authorizing transfer of appropriations. This is kind of a, uh, end of the year, um, uh, bookkeeping, um, res- you know, uh, res- resolution resolving at the end of the year, transferring. Three forty-six, sorry. Two twenty-four, three forty-six. So, so, uh, actually it's fairly, uh, considering the amount of the budget, it's a fairly small amount, um, to cover. So I think that's to our credit. Um, resolution three forty-seven is a change order for Ventnor Avenue, Ventnor Avenue Signal Synchronization Project, which is an increase of one thirty-one, six twenty-eight, uh, before you have anything to add, I will say that, um, it is, um, uh, is, uh, is looking really good. I think that the design on the Ventnor Avenue, uh, signalization from, uh, from Dorset to Fredericksburg is, uh, is a benefit. Um, and it, and, uh, I can see, I, I, I understand it's been disruptive to some businesses, but as it moves through, um, the, the long-term benefit will be there. Do you have anything you wanted to, to add to that?
Yep. Just to touch base on, and I had mixed these up with the, the, um, pedestrian traffic crossing one. This is the one that had the additional funds for some water services, some more stormwater, uh, issues we had to deal with. By creating those bump outs, which are much safer for pedestrians, it creates some drainage issues for us and we ran into some issues here and there. Um, and we've, we've resolved those, but they, those resolutions do cost a few dollars more. So it's all within the, the parameters of the project. Um, we still think overall we might be, we, within our overall budget. So we just have to, we need to cover these numbers for now. Hope to finish it up. We're waiting on the polls. Um, temporarily, you've seen a couple polls go up at a few intersections that have flashing lights on them. Um, those are the old polls we just put back in temporarily, but we will have new, um, polls coming in. They should be delivered sometime in January and then installed over the, over the next few weeks from, upon delivery and ready for the springtime. But yeah, the, the, the design is much better and, and we have to say, I have to say this, we pushed the county to do this very same design on the third part from Dorset to Fredericksburg. You know, we came out with a tabletop design, which is what our intersections are. I don't want to get too technical, but Ed Stinson came up with this plan. It's safer for pedestrians. You don't have those odd curbs and weird, you know, curbs in the way of people walking and tripping hazards and all that. It's just a better way to make it pedestrian safe. It's also traffic calming. You have these, these curbs coming into the middle of the road. Your eye as a driver slows you down. It's tra- traffic calming effectiveness is, is well known in the industry. So it's a good project for us and, you know, it was a little disruptive. We did it over the winter to try and be at least impactful on those businesses, but you know, in the end, you're going to get a great product.
I, thank you. Um, I agree. And, and it's a massive project. I apologize if I misspoke. It's from, as you said, it's from Dorset to Jackson and, and it was, you know, you, 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 you know, every short town does these sorts of things in the off season. It's always going to be disruptive, but it's the, it's less worse now, I guess, is the, is the only way you can say it. Um, but it, I think it's going to be a benefit in the long term, hundred percent. Um, so that is a small increase relative to the overall project. Um, resolution three forty-seven is, uh,
Three forty-eight.
Three forty-eight. Okay. I'm sorry. There, the, the notes are, are, I keep bringing the one above it. I apologize. Resolution three forty-eight is awarding a contract reconstruction of the basketball courts to sure top construction in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is the result of a bidding process. Any other comments on there? This is the lowest qualified bidder.
I hope to get that started soon. Get the basketball court back in order.
And, and, and just to, to make it clear that this is a complete reconstruction of that court. It's going to be demolition of the existing court, replacement, uh, of the subbase, the paving, backwards, fencing, all of it. So it's a complete reconstruction.
Yep. It'll be nice. Some, some corrections too. There's, there's a odd slope at the one end of it. We're trying to fix that as well, working on. Uh, hearing of that.
Yeah, I think the, there was a backboards that were donated. Are we replacing those and that, the whole?
I reached out to, um, uh,
Cackards?
Yeah, Doug Sacred, um, about that. Um, I'll have, I'll circle back with them. We did include it in the bid just in case.
Right.
We ended up getting them. We could, we could pull the backboards out and now if they want their name on it, maybe they'll just pay for the ones we bought. So we, we bought clear, spec clear ones. So.
It looked good in there. They put them in their driveway, maybe.
You're right. Yeah. I'll make sure to get back.
But the, um, uh, but now this doesn't affect the pickleball courts, correct? That's a separate.
That'll, that'll come later.
Yep.
Pudding courts and pickleball courts is still really in the concept design.
Got it.
We're not ready to, um, do a contract bid for that yet.
Okay. Okay, more heavy lifting here. Uh, resolution two zero two four, three forty-nine, resolution awarding contract to furnish and delivery of boardwalk lumber, decking and fasteners. That's not a small thing.
Mayor, I, I might ask you to hold off on this.
Oh.
Uh, Commissioner Langraft, have you had an opportunity to review this, this bid?
Um, I just saw the total amount. I didn't get copied or maybe I did, but I must've missed it. Um, the full um, bid package.
Yeah, I, there, there were two bidders and I, I have some questions that, that may or may not be uh, important, but a- unless there's some urgency to this, I would like us to all have more time to review this and get the questions answered by the architect to put this out to bid for us.
Okay, I would be supportive of that.
Good.
So we'll pull that one.
Yeah, defer to you. You're, you're more, more.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I thought the number was going to come in higher than that, honestly, but if, if Tom has, if he's reviewed it in, in more detail than I have, I only just saw the numbers. So, um, if he's got some questions, I, I would err on the side of caution and a month is not going to kill us.
Right.
It won't even be a month. Meeting's January ninth.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Um, on that same order, we are tabling, um, we are pulling the resolution three forty-nine, um, to, uh, the bid opening for the, uh, I'm sorry, three fifty is, uh, we are, um, the awarding, uh, for construction of the new bandshell until the, um, uh, until the proper amount of time for questions can be, can be taken.
Yeah, that's my understanding. We just got them today.
Yeah.
Till January ninth. That, that, again, I don't think that affects us too much.
No.
There, there was an addendum and there's a requirement, uh, for there to be seven business days from the time of the, uh, uh, add-on, the addendum to when you open the bids. And we only had six days.
We're short on business days.
We're short one business day because the, uh, the architect counted the weekend.
Right.
So when you now start the clock over, it brings us to this new bid date.
Okay, understood. Um, and then we are pulling the authorization of the, uh, three fifty-one as well, the, the ambulance resolution until that can be sorted.
Yeah. So all those add-ons are not add-ons.
No, ones are now subtraction or non, non adds. Okay. Uh, then we will be, that hand, that covers the, um, uh, resolutions by consent.
We do have, excuse me, Mayor, we do have that one add-on, which is going to be three fifty-two.
Three fifty-two. So three fifty-two is, I'm sorry, three fifty-two is, uh, on the bench approving to submit grant application to execute a grant agreement. So this was late in the week. Uh, a possibility for, um, habitat restoration and coastal resilience grants came across our grant writers' desk from, um, and from NOAA, and we feel as though we have a good opportunity to apply for that for the, um, uh, the eco park concept in Ventnor West. Um,
Thought we could get some streetscape out of it too, right? The same one?
Yes, I believe that was discussed, but I don't know that streetscapes were being awarded well.
This is, this is a different application.
Oh, different. Okay. This is through DEP.
I'm going to recuse myself because I haven't seen that.
Okay. Okay.
I support it, but I don't, I haven't seen the details of it, so I don't know if I'm, should really be voting.
You're gonna love it.
You're gonna love it.
It's uh, Ben, we can, we can, uh, we can forward you the emails on it so you could be aware.
Happy to do it. Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, no, I certainly, look, I support the project. I just didn't see that, so I.
Yeah. Late, it was late in the week, understood. Um, so then we'll move on to bills and payroll. Uh, we do not have any discussion items listed unless anybody, any of the commissioners want to add anything. Um, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that, uh, we can do that at that time. At this time, we have um, uh, public comment. So uh, can I have a. Uh, motion to open public comment on anything that's been discussed so far in the workshop meeting? May I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes, at this time, the members of public can comment on anything that we've discussed, discussed so far. Though, as I said before, there'll be another public comment section at the end of the meeting to discuss anything that you would like. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone. State your name and address for the record, and we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody uh, on items so far? Anyone? Anyone in the Zoom platform? On items so far.
Anybody on Zoom wish to speak on any of the items that were discussed so far? No.
No. Okay, seeing none and checking in Zoom, may I have a motion uh, to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting and open the, and call to order the regular session of this meeting. Um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October tenth, regular and executive?
I have to make that motion, right, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Yep, I make that motion.
I will second.
Just one.
Lisa, roll call.
Mr. Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve minutes of November fourteenth, regular session?
I think Marie needs to make that one, right?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langriff?
Epstein.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Excellent, we did it.
We got through it.
That was like a parlor game. Sorry. We, uh, we have, we don't have any ordinances for introduction tonight. Um, we have no public hearing on ordinances this evening. We have no ordinances to adopt this evening. Uh, however, we have a mo, I would, uh, I would like a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-four dash. Three two zero to twenty twenty-four dash three five one with no.
We're gonna.
With adding one resolution.
Pulling three forty-nine.
Okay, pulling.
Fifty and fifty-one.
Pulling three forty-nine, fifty and fifty-one.
And adding three fifty-two.
And adding resolution three fifty-two. Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. As stated.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yeah.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Three for three. Um, uh, approval of bills and payroll. Can we, uh, can I have a motion? Uh, uh, Amy, would you please read bills and payroll for this session?
Payables for this period's twelve million, nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Payrolls for this period, one million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, forty-six dollars, forty-seven cents.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to uh, pay bills and payroll?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Uh, we have, uh, I see no announcements or public safety report this evening and we have commissioner reports. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Landgraf if you have anything to add uh, to commissioner reports for this session.
Just a couple of things. Um, one, thanks for allowing me to do this by Zoom. It, I didn't want to miss another meeting, so I am. Out of, out of state right now, so um, and this is our first meeting since the weekend we had, the first weekend with all of our events. Christmas tree lighting, the parade, phenomenal job by everybody. Just really knocked it out of the park this year. Shelley, Donna, you know, Public Works, Rick and your, and his elves, the PW elves, as he was calling them. Um, just did a great job this year getting the city to look very festive. Um, just went over the top, I thought. I think the streets look great. Um, you know, we had a little bit of a hurdle to get through with the work being done on Ventnor Avenue. Both Ferriazi and his team did a good job pre-cleaning and our guys went and did some final touches. Uh, it was safe for pedestrians and, you know, it didn't take away from the holiday parade. You know, and kudos to Shelley and her team, putting that together again, just doing a great job. I know we were all there and, and you know, it's very well attended. Just can't say enough about that, those, those events. Um. Other than that, just uh, you know, we're all getting ready for the holiday season. Already talked about the projects that are ongoing right now. Winchester Avenue Bulkhead is pretty much finishing up. We'll be doing some paving down there real soon if it hasn't already occurred. Um, to finish up that project. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a, it's actually a very good connection you have for the, for being so far away. Um, now I have a question about the Winchester Avenue. Is, are there going to be trash cans included on that?
Um, we, we've talked about, we've ordered a bunch of them for Ventnor Avenue. Um, I'm sure we can, we can put something down there. It may be some of the ones we relocate that we have now. Um, green, not the green team, the um, beautification we gave us. For years, we may be able to move some of those and relocate them until we get new ones. These cans are pretty, they're eleven hundred bucks a piece.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a little pricey.
I agree.
That was one of the increases on the, the Ventnor Avenue. The ones that were included were these tiny little ones that would have to be changed out every half, you know, half a day.
Right.
We can certainly add them. We, we are adding sidewalk there in an area that didn't have it before. So it's going to be a little tight, but it'll at least be sidewalks. You can walk along that area. Um, and we are paving it and doing some gutter work on the opposite side to fix some issues we have there.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mento, do you have anything to add for commissioner comments and reports?
Well, it's that time of year we're working on budget and Amy's working on budget, gathering numbers and doing projections. And we had a tax sale and other than that, I don't really have. Too much more to report. It's business as usual and finance and the tax office.
Tax sale was successful, I guess. It's usually.
Yes.
It was successful. There were twenty-five sold, no, no municipalings. So all of them sold.
That's good. Good. Um, I would just echo with both the commissioners said, I think the, the, it's, it's really hard to keep up the, the momentum. I'm sure that the parade gets better and better every year, but it really does feel like it does. It feels like the whole city gets engaged in it. And kudos to the Public Works, those guys really a hundred and ten percent on everything. The pier looks great with the, with the, you're, you're really kind of. Sneaking around the town and adding all these little features that with the, the, the decorating the pier this year was a surprise and. Um, I, 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 and the, the building always looks great. Um, and um, and yeah, even um, everybody seemed, it, it's just a really well attended from people from all over. Um, I'll just add a couple of events that we have coming up since we are still in the, in the um, in the holiday season. Um, uh, there's a uh, menorah lighting here uh, at City Hall on Thursday, uh, December twenty-sixth. Um. And it's at. The, there's a little confusion about how it was posted, um, so we'll have to clear that up. I think fi- five PM is the. Four, fourth, the four, four fifteen, I think it said. Four o'clock, so it's four o'clock according, and, and uh, on Thursday, a week from today. Um, and then January first, the polar bear plunge. Is uh, at one PM. Um, uh, the uh, uh, at Newport Avenue, uh, again, the uh. Fire and police are always there to, to help that. Look on our social media pages for all those connections. Um, and then I will do a quick shout out. We are still hiring class one special uh, law enforcement officers, uh, seasonal. For the upcoming twenty twenty-five season. So um, so if anyone is uh, interested, keep uh, keep the word out or, or mention it. Again, look at our website for those links. Uh, Chief Cahill. Ah, thank you. Santa happens to be on our fire truck uh, tomorrow night. There's a, there's a route that goes through Ventnor Heights, starts at. On the city website, so you can see him and hear him, because it's a small, because they'll be laying on the horns, I'm sure. It's good hometown stuff. It really is. Um, uh, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, so, uh, may I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment? Unless anyone else has anything else to say. Commissioners? No, I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes, so uh, opened, uh, opening the meeting to the public. We are now open to the public to discuss any topic of interest. Um, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mary Samberg, two nineteen North West second Avenue. Um, I'm here about homeless harbor, the back bay.
Okay.
The boats. Uh, I brought pictures and I brought an ordinance. I've been working on this for quite some time. Um. I have enough to hand up to whoever. It's got to need to picture here.
You give a copy to our solicitor as well, please? And then. If there's something I'm discussing in detail, you could set up an appointment with myself and the, and the.
Um, I actually have talked to, I talked to Patty and Patty told me to bring it here.
Okay.
Okay, um. It's going to be brief.
Well, you, yeah, I appreciate that Patty said that, but you, you could also talk to the police chief and myself.
I have, I have, I, I've, I've been attacked by Mark Hyde, who lives on the boat. Uh, I grew up with him. I'm sixty-two years old. He's sixty-three. I went all through school with him. Something's changed. Uh, the drugs and alcohol have done something terrible to him. And uh, just this past couple of weeks, uh, he destroyed my car. A brand-new car with a board. Uh, it's in caliber collision right now, getting fixed and. The price is upwards of thirty-seven hundred dollars worth of damage. Um, I've been his biggest advocate, feeling bad for him, but. Now he's getting violent and the bay is starting to clog up with more and more boats. Okay, now the pictures that I. That I sent to you, I have them numbered. The first picture that you see is his boat during a storm. It broke loose. You say it?
Yep.
Okay, number two.
Commissioner Landgraf doesn't have the opportunity to see these. We'll have to.
Uh, I'm sure my brother did speak to.
Yeah, I've spoken to Bill and, and I, I, I don't know that we can do a whole lot. I mean, we've.
Well, I did bring Lance, I did bring an ordinance. It's the only one in New Jersey. That uh, Long Beach has, and I spoke to the attorney there and he's more than happy. To go over it with you. It's been very successful working there and actually several other uh, surrounding areas. Stone Harbor, Avalon and Cape May County is trying to come up with a similar. Uh, ordinance, but I actually want to add a couple of things to this ordinance that they have because. Obviously, he doesn't have facilities on his boat. He doesn't have electric or anything like that, so. His gray water is the bay water. Okay?
If we can find a way to, to, to help the situation, I'm fully supportive of it, but.
I, I know.
By both state police.
Well.
Our police and state police that we can't do anything.
Well, you can with this ordinance. That's why I'm bringing this ordinance, this ordinance, uh, gives.
Miss, uh, uh, I don't know, just to pa- pause you for just a second. Um, our, our, our solicitors, uh, it looks like she has something to say on the subject.
Okay.
So I want to point her to there. I appreciate what you're saying.
I just wanted the commissioners to know and, and you as well, that I have spoken to the chief about this issue. So we are in the process of looking at what we can do from a legal perspective on this. Um, so I do appreciate you, you sharing this and I'd be happy to, to do further research.
For, for a bit of time since, well, well. Let's move on to the other pictures and then we'll discuss further about the actual ordinance. Because the number two picture concerns the city, okay? After that boat broke loose, number two, the boat smashed into where our pump house is. Ventnor Gardens Plaza, West Hickin, right next to Alby's house. As you can see, it is tied up. And it had smashed into that area and it stayed there for about five days like that. Okay, now that's one of my biggest fears. Um. The danger during a storm. Now, if it's west winds, these boats, there's two of them out there and there's somebody on social media. Or um. A chat from New Jersey that plans to bring his new constructed. Monstrosity to Ventnor Homeless Harbor. Um, I tried to print it out and I thought I'd be able to find it again. But like, who needs to know that, that we have more people coming because we're not doing anything about it? But he wants to come and tie up. And not pay taxes and do what they're doing because they're getting away with it. But the infrastructure in Ventnor, that crashing into city property should. Worry us because bulkheads and things like that are of a lot of money. Neither one of these boats have any insurance, nor do they have a job. I know because I'm responsible and on the hook for my car damages. And I don't know if he's going to attack again this three times in one week. Number three. These are two sailboats. One is Mark Hyde's. The one without the mast and the other one has a mast. The one with the mast had sunk. So that is causing problems if somebody runs a jet ski or a boat and hits it. And Mark Hyde's boat, which is number four. Looks like it could sink at any given moment. Number five. Is the boat that's, that was closer to the, to the residence on Mammoth Avenue. That guy just tied that boat up and left. He's, can't be located. No one knows. It's abandoned. And number six is my back picture window. I pay high taxes, living with the bay view. And that's my view. That is literally my back window. You can see my firewood and you can see his boat. Now, like I had said, I mean, I don't know if my brother went too much into it with Lance because it was at uh, his own. Residence and he had a function going on at his house. But um, the lawyer from Long Beach said that they adopted this ordinance. To keep this very same thing that we have going on in Ventnor. To stop it so that. The boat, first of all, you can't live on a boat. Anywhere in the state of New Jersey, except for right across the Longport Bridge at Seaview Village. You know how you go over the bridge and to the left when you're going to ShopRite, the um, Summer's Point? That is the only marina that you are allowed to live on a boat. Did you know that? In New Jersey? You're not allowed to just. More a boat and live there. Happy, lucky. You think you can, you, you can, you can more and then you have to leave. Just like we see the Canadian boats, they come in the summertime, they more for the night, they get supplies and they leave.
Okay.
We see it all the time. But like I said, um. My property has been attacked and I see a marked change. In this guy and I don't know when I get my, my car back, if he's going to come and do it again. It's not like he did it in the middle of the night. It's not like he did it in the middle of the night. Did it seven P M.
And you reported this to the police. There was a there was a.
I'm sorry.
You reported this to the police.
Oh, yeah, the police were here. In fact, I brought my daughter's boyfriend. He's a state trooper. He actually walked out and had to chase him.
Yeah.
Throw the board down. But he's so out of his mind on drugs and alcohol, I don't even know if he knows what day it is.
Do you have any comment you want to make?
No, other than the the city has, I think, reacted appropriately in terms of the police action that's been taken. There's not much more we know legally now that we can do at this point, um but we are exploring further options.
Right.
So.
I mean, I'm I'm not looking for a resolution on those police cases because I'll go to court, I'll do what I have to do.
Right.
I mean, I don't expect you to go and and figure this out or you to figure it out. I'm hoping to get this passed because we both know, well, we all know. If if Mark Hyde pulled his boat up down in Margate, this is never gonna happen. We can't let this become a homeless harbor where some guy from New Jersey is bringing his boat. Not a boat, it's like a barge. It's not even a boat. He hand-built it and is encouraged to come there because no one bugs anybody. So.
All right.
Is that what we're looking for? Because all of the.
Well, I don't think that's fair to say.
I I don't think so.
Uh, so I appreciate everything you've brought to us, and I appreciate you coming out. Um, I know you've talked to the police chief and to and your family members have talked to the commissioner. I acknowledge all of that. I think it's um it's concerning. I don't, I I think um the the I think what we do as a commission is typically look and see where there are, if there are, if there are holes in our ordinances that um best practices are showing otherwise and something we're not doing. Um, I'm I'm open to it as well, the the notion of uh uh of an ordinance that um it doesn't allow um houseboats to be anchored for more than a period of twenty-four hours. I don't think I object to that um or the discussion regarding that, but I think as a as a as a commissioner, the process of writing an ordinance goes through the our solicitor, and it gets vetted by the commissioners. So that this, I'm open to having that discussion with our solicitor.
So I did want to add two things. And it is already on the radar, so.
It is already on the radar, so.
Yes.
So you know, the.
The other thing I did want to.
You can keep you up to date on.
Was gray water and trash removal. Down in Cape May Courthouse, when I spoke to them, they're trying to add to the Long Beach ordinance uh because they have people down there that are building actually beautiful um houseboats that are stationed in their dock and their Airbnb.
Right.
So they're going one step above and saying you have to show where you're getting rid of the gray water and and the trash.
I think that's common sense for our for our our back babe.
I mean, it's not included in that um Long Beach, and if you would like, you can call the um attorney for Long Beach, and he was really, really informative, and he sent me all of that information and said they've had great success. And the marine police will follow an ordinance.
Right.
As long as it's within the city limits.
Right.
And that qualifies for city limits.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that we can do something, but you know, this is all I can do.
Right. Well, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. It's already on our radar from our solicitor standpoint or administrator standpoint, and now the.
And how I know if something's getting done on this because I'm not familiar with like the town hall and all of that.
So anytime there's in there's something discussed at a public meeting, it would appear on the agenda, so I'd encourage you to to review the agendas to see if it's listed as a discussion item. If there is an actual ordinance going to be introduced, that would be introduced, it would be discussed beforehand, introduced on a first reading. That's just by title only, so.
Per each um town meeting?
Yes, so it would be introduced at a meeting. And then typically at the next meeting, there would be a second reading and a hearing. So that would be the opportunity at that point for the public, anybody interested to come and say, okay, I see your ordinance, I object to this part, I think this is good, I'd like to see this added. Once that public hearing is closed, the commission can then either move to adopt the ordinance as it was previously uh worded, or they can amend it. If they choose to amend it, depending on the nature of the amendment, it may trigger the process to restart all over again.
That's why I wanted to add the gray water and the trash.
Right.
That type of thing.
And I did note it.
Yes, um, so are you, are you, is this positive? Does it look like you're interested in doing so?
I've been directed to look into it for sure.
Okay.
So.
But it but it seems positive, correct?
I don't know what you mean by positive.
Well, it's a discussion. Because it comes a discussion, and then based on the discussion, we know whether it moves forward. We have to weigh all the other unintended consequences. And what are, you know, what are what are
the towns.
Within the law.
If you want, after the meeting, I can get your email address and maybe we can.
Oh, that'd be terrific.
Lisa, when does the agenda get uh uh listed to the uh to the website?
So our meetings are on third, second, and fourth Thursday, so they'll be on that Monday.
So if you look at a meeting, though, if you follow their agenda, you can look at the calendar on our website that shows when the meetings are and the and the Monday prior to each meeting, as Lisa said, the agendas are listed on there. There's a link, so you can read it to see if this particular agenda is being discussed.
Okay.
All right.
You can always email to status update as well and I can reach out with you. I I'll give you my email and my party could like, so.
And then I'll get out of your hair.
All right.
Linger, you know?
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're, I think, once.
I personally, I'll get your information.
Any any public comments in the Zoom platform?
Anybody on Zoom wish to make any questions or comments? No.
Hearing none, seeing no more in the chambers, may have a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. I see we have no executive session this evening, correct? Um, seeing there's no further business tonight, I would like to request a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Can I make one timely announcement before?
One timely announcement and.
The clock is fixed.
Ah. Forgot.
He's so clever.
So we can stage our um uh Marty McFly moment.
We we can do that.
Out on.
How long it was out of commission, but it it kind of became a pet project of mine. I convinced uh then mayor.
Congratulations.
To uh let us pursue repairing it, and it's now done.
Excellent. Excellent, great. And mayor, uh uh commissioner, good luck on the slopes while you're there. Thanks for coming in. Um, and uh everyone have a uh good weekend.
I don't think we did the final motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close, uh, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, all. I did thirty-two thousand feet of vertical skiing today.